Hello, everybody. We will call this Steel County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 8th order. This is two public comments. Those wishing to speak must state their name and address for the record. After they are acknowledged by the board chair, each person will be limited to two minutes to make his or her remarks. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. The board may not take action on an item presented during the public comment period unless the item is already on the agenda for action. When appropriate, the board may refer inquiries or act in the way of during the public comment period to the county commissioner or board. So with that.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Gail Jordanson. My address is 249 East Main at the corner of Grover New. And forgive me if I'm a little long. I don't mean to be emotional or anything. I see from the city council meeting that they're planning to move COVID money and start the Main Street Highway 49 project, uh, 48 project eminently within a year. And I want to say to begin with, I never was invited or received an invitation to the public meetings. I was new in town, but I wasn't that new. I walked, hand-watched all my paperwork when I bought the house right to the county. They recorded me immediately. And that was November of 2026. And I believe that putting a roundabout at my intersection is a flawed design. You don't have to be in our community to see that. I realize I might be the only homeowner right on the intersection, but there's another homeowner next to me. And that roundabout, you know, it's not one of those little ones in rows. It's going to be a full size or maybe a little bit bigger, you know, jumbo roundabout. It's going to cut off my ability to use my front entrance as I'm working on the house. You see that putting money into it. And that front porch is next. And that's where you receive your guests, that's where you get your mail. I get a lot of packages. I have a little eBay business. Now, on the side entrance, that's where I want to put a handicap ramp. We've discussed, I've discussed my physical problems before. That's where I was always planning to put a handicap ramp through that side entrance. I'm aging out. It's only, my knees are only going to get worse. Okay? That's realistic. But also, I won't be able to put a car there for a handicap at, you know, parking. And my friends are aging out. I'd like enough to meet a nice woman who was a young friend, who almost my friends are older. And then the tail, the median of the roundabout is going to cut off everyone's access in and out or make it from the alley. In addition to that, because I have a historic house and I'm going to that another time, you're going to have a lot of rubbernecking where people are going to, you know, rubberneck the property. And it would be just wiser not to have people rubbernecking through a roundabout and have them be able to pull over and look at the property. I get a lot of packages, like I said, but I'm also dependent on grocery deliveries, medical deliveries, lumber.
Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome.
Email should probably come down. Melissa?
Call in 2435 Firewood Place Northeast. Good evening, commissioners. Regarding your item number 14, East Side Corridor Federal Funding Transfer Request, it's interesting that there would be an abrupt request, there would be an abrupt request from county engineer Paul Spoonholz to remove substantial federal dollars from a $25-plus million highway project several years into the process with no clear direction. Could it be that by stripping federal funding, the project could move forward with zero federal oversight along with the lack of oversight and enforcement of mitigation measures? We should certainly expect increased safety risks and an increase to the local taxpayer burden. The local tax base will take a substantial hit for this project because of this decision to reject federal funding. This isn't, this is in additional, this is in addition to legal and ethical violations of proceeding without proper noise mitigation, further giving the latest maneuver, the appearance of retaliation, and continued disregard for the concerns and requests of the public. As commissioners, we urge you to do the right thing, either abandon the ESC project altogether or ensure that federal funding remains dedicated to the ESC project. This means not reallocating these federal funds elsewhere for the East Side Corridor, federally funded or forget it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ross Silver. I'm at 2525 Stone Creek Drive. I'm also here to address the proposed transfer of $3.96 million in federal funds in the East Side Corridor for the Main Street project. Dropping these federal funds is not about speeding up the project. It's about potentially dodging the federal oversight of the project. And that's where we're involved, particularly for the mitigations like noise wall and a lot of the stuff that you've seen us fight before for a long time. Removing the federal funds doesn't remove the federal requirements. They're almost all still there. It shifts the burden of the federal dollars to Steel County instead. Agencies like the railroad and our core of engineers will still trigger environmental studies, so I can wait for them. But now taxpayers will end up having to put the bill back again. Without federal funds, Steel County risks violating the noise standards if they're put to road where it is planned. It'll make the East Side Corridor 29th Avenue immediately violate those noise regulations unless a $2.3 million noise wall. Doesn't really make sense. No wall, that opens up county lawsuits, affects various expense. Timing is also concerning. Two months ago, residents were promised to vote on the noise wall, and we haven't heard anything back on that. No letters, no proposed date, nothing. And then just days after launching the community's GoFundMe campaign for transparency and public data, these federally, federal funds are kind of just being moved without oversight or potentially without oversight. We're worried about if it's misappropriation of funds or retaliation. State senators are already disappointed in how Steel County has handled projects that met its speed limits, are going on, and have any township issues. This will lead to damage to counties' reputation further. We're just, we're worried about it. All right? If the East Side Corridor is not abandoned or moved to 800 to 500 feet further, or as you reconsidered before exploding the county to legal and financial risks, federally funded or forget it?
Thank you.
Simone Vai, 2535, Montecito Drive. On April 1st, April Fool's Day, we received our property tax statement. It reads, 2025 amount owed $8,044 on our homesteaded property at 2535 Montecito. Ouch. It's unbelievable. My question today is, if the earmarked funds for the East Side Corridor are reallocated and then the highway is built, how will the deficit in funds be covered? Who will pay for the lost funding? With no federal money, will there be no expenses, new design structure, new guidelines drawn, new reports submitted? With federal money reallocated, who will pay this bill? The taxpayers? Will it be added to the tax burden? Shouldn't the taxpayers be made aware of the reallocation of federal money and what this may mean? Either federally funded or forget it. I invite each one of you to come to our home. I'll put on a pot of coffee. We'll go outside and we'll sit on our patio. The patio is adjacent to our house. The patio and the house is just a few feet from the proposed 29th Avenue location. I will listen to their advantages of the 29th option over the 34th location. Then I will show you how the red line and shaded areas on the project map will relate to our property. The reality of the negative impact on our property and our quality of life is shocking. There is not enough landscaping and not enough dirt in a burn that will change this reality. Federally funded or forget it? Without federal money, guidelines and protections are lost. The financing is altered. I fear that the property owners and taxpayers will bear the brunt of the cost and the adverse effects. What will our properties and our property taxes look like two, three, four years down the line?
Thank you, Simone. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Matt Sennett, 2519 Stone Creek Drive. Also here to talk about the East Side Corridor projects. We've tried to engage with you, our elected representatives, on multiple occasions, and fortunately, you all refused to meet with us outside of public comment, saying you'd rather meet with us during open houses and public meetings, which as of late have been non-existent. Meanwhile, we've had important questions and some back and forth dialogues needed and communications about the East Side Corridor project and for our understanding of what's involved. About a month and a half ago, we were told that a vote for a noise wall would be coming, just like Ross said over there, in a month's time. Nothing came. Then a couple of weeks later, we were told it was a month or two away. Still, nothing happened and no updates. So, of course, we push harder. We push harder for data and communication. We push harder on the data request that we had to formally submit to the county attorney's office way back in October for information. We received some data upfront after much back and forth, finally, but we're still waiting for the majority of it, and that was clear back in October. Unfortunately, we refused to communicate with us. We must take action. We will not stand idly by while our livelihoods, our families, our children, and our homes are put at risk. We've been transparent. We need and deserve data on the project. Getting the state involved to get the data request going and increasing communication could have been avoided, and that's what the GoFundMe was about, but it's been referenced. We've reached that multiple times. But now we see that you're proposing new federal funds, again, a day or two after that campaign launches, away from the East Side Corridor. We've already been told by previous county engineers regarding the safety and noise mitigations that they can do what they want. Since it's a county road, obviously, they were proved wrong on that because of the federal funds that were in place and protected us. And the current county engineer said if we're up to him, he would have no mitigations whatsoever put in place for residents. Again, not his say since federal funds were involved, but now that's changing all of a sudden, and you're removing the federal funding oversight. So it's a shame we have to go to measures and do it with the data request what we had to. You have the authority to change course on this, though. We don't understand why there's such a contempt for residents and citizens with this project. We don't understand the hidden agendas and the emails that we've come up on, the trickery with, we're going to vote on the noise wall, but then the county engineer says to the consultant in front of Rock and Hill, the noise wall, we just want them to vote on it because of the vote.
Thank you, Matt.
So we just want things on the oven up. So federally funded or forget it, please.
Anyone else to call the comment?
Melissa Zimmerman, 2525, Stone Creek Drive. Also here to talk about the federal funding. Do our voices matter or are we here just for a show? Dropping federal funds from the East Side Corridor unless you're abandoning it entirely is a blatant attempt to obey federal oversight for required mitigations like a noise wall. It's not just unethical, it's corrupt, and it won't work. Dropping federal funds does not eliminate federal obligations, especially when ethics violations, retaliation, and misappropriations are involved. It just shifts the financial burdens and risks onto Steel County taxpayers. Under Minnesota Rule 73, 7030, you are legally required to take all reasonable measures to prevent noise violations. Your own studies show 29th Avenue will immediately violate standards, and the only reasonable mitigation is a $2.3 million noise wall or avoidance. Anything less is negligence and opens Steel County lawsuits. Let's talk timing. Two months ago, your engineer promised the noise wall vote in one to two months. Where is it? Why was it delayed? Because he never intended to build it. Dropping federal funds to dodge mitigations isn't just new, it's a pattern, and it's deceiving the public. Trying to move federal funds without a public vote is misappropriation. It's illegal. So I ask you directly, was there a county vote to approve this transfer? As of today, April 8th, there hasn't been one. Meanwhile, on April 1st, the city of Oat Towne was asked to approve it, and Commissioner Abby claims no knowledge of it. On March 31st, before any public vote, just four days after residents funded a GoFundMe demanding transparency after months of public data violations, Steel County's transfer request was received by the ATP. This is retaliation against taxpayers demanding transparency. It's weaponizing public trust, and it violates federal law. So by voting yes, you are endorsing your engineers' illegal actions and abandoning, or are we abandoning the East Side Corridor altogether? You owe us answers, and you owe them now. Today, we demand a full.
Thank you, Ma.
Have you responded or forget it?
And as it says in here, comments are addressed to the board and not to one individual commissioner, please. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Deb Schrader. I'm from 416 Montecito, Apple Valley, Minnesota. However, since 2018, I've been Oat Towne majority of my time doing the area for my parents and for my extended family. Part of that is taking up the medical appointments all over and mostly to Rochester, and I spend a lot of time on old Highway 14. And so I actually was coming here for another purpose, but as I opened up the packet, I got pulled into reading the Havana, the Havana study. And it kept pulling me and pulling me because it's someplace that I love to drive. Now without the new highway, with the new highway, I don't have all the traffic. It's a calm, peaceful, beautiful, feminine, as a beautiful, as I'm driving by, the houses are always well-kept and immaculate. Anyway, so I continued looking through the study, feasibility study, and I've written many proposals. I've approved many proposals in my previous career, and I found some things that were concerning to me. So I wanted to suggest one thing that concerns me through the project need. There is the, whoops, I need this or I'll forget where I am. The 2040 transportation plan uses input data for once, one area that it was looking at, it used 2016 to 2020 crash data, and then it's using a 2012 Commonwealth Safety Plan. In another area where they're using the 2040 Transit Transportation Plan, they're using a 10-year data from 2014 to 2024 crash history, and it's fed into a system to check if it aligns with MINDOT's calculator, and it did align. My concern about this is that you're using data to come up with these solutions that you're going to vote for that impact these people's lives, and you're using data on the, when the old highway was the artery to Rochester and the only access point. You had this, the only way you could drive to Rochester was Highway 14. Now you have New Highway 14, so Old 14 is a new road. It's not 14 anymore, it's Claremont Road. And you should not have, sorry, you should not have, use the data that's from what was the old artery. You need to use data from when it started being that road, so in November 2021 is when it would start. And, okay.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you. Anyone else to call the comment?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jen Sanford. I'm at 2441 Stone Creek Drive. And I also have some concerns about the, I had a vote on the East Side Corridor project and what the rationale was for originally requesting federal funding to begin with and now potentially dropping federal funding. So I think that all the taxpayers probably deserve an answer about what that rationale was and what it's going to cost them. I understand that those of you sitting here today may not have been a part of the original planning back in the, I think it was early 90s or mid 90s, when that was originally, when this project was originally accepted, and I absolutely agree there needs to be a corridor on the east side. And you guys got put in a bad position. You were, some decisions were made in the interim where the city had purchased land right the east side of Countryside or Country View, this area. And then later on, for some reason, those setbacks were sold as part of the lots that were sold to build homes so that you could have a bigger taxpayer base. And now you're in a position, you guys are in a position where you're trying to clean up that mess and trying to go forward with building a corridor. So I can appreciate the frustration on, maybe on your part, that, hey, you know, we had this plan, and somebody, somebody stuck a foot in the dirt, put in the mud puddle, and now you guys are stuck with it, right? I'm just asking you to do the right thing, be transparent, care with the taxpayers, help us understand what the cost of the project is going to be with and without tax, federal funding, why the federal funding is potentially being dropped, and what this really means to that entire neighborhood who is going to have a different issue because you're asking to put a 55 mile an hour road there when you decide multiple times. All you need to do is reduce season or push the road out a little bit and start over, start again. It's okay. We'd rather as a community look together forward better. But I would also ask if we're not going to consider that federal funding, gently drop the project for the timing and reevaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb, or Jen, excuse me, Jen. Anyone else? Only twice, anyone else? Thank you. That'll take us to number 14 on page 65 in the packet, the East Side Corridor Federal Funding Transfer Request. Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I just want to give you an update tonight on the federal funding that we have at the East Side Corridor. Part of, the county was awarded, many years ago, roughly $4 million in federal funding for the project, which enabled us to commit other local monies that we have available to other projects. So that was a benefit of receiving the federal money. Part of the commitments that we get and getting that federal money is that we had to complete environmental documents by the deadline of December 2025 here. That is a hard and fast deadline that we must meet to be able to use these funds. And even though we've been working on completing these environmental documents, as you know, there's been many, many delays. We started this back in 2022, and we still are working on this environmental document. Through many, many setbacks, the project team is just no longer confident we can meet that December 1st deadline, and so we are going to be asking to transfer this funds to another eligible project. It's still a delay, as you probably know, the most significant was the Federal Highway Administration, as we were nearing the completion of the first environmental document, the, what's referred to as a programmatic categorical exclusion, just a different level. The feds have many, many different levels of environmental documents, everything from a one-pager to a whole environmental impact statement, which is very significant for freeway-type projects usually. So we were working on this categorical exclusion document, and then the feds, as we were almost done with it, the feds came back and said, no, you got to go to the next level of document. That added over a year's worth of effort that we had to start over and redo. So significant, significant impact to our project timeline. And then just recently, we were on a goal here of wrapping things up here within the next month or two. A big significant portion that still remains is the noise analysis, as you heard about tonight. Yes, we were hoping to be bringing that too to the public here this month and next, but unfortunately, many things with our consultant. One, they lost their main person that was writing this document and organizing and doing it. She ended up going and working for MINDOT, so major setback for our consultant. Then other things, the other big thing is that we're still trying to figure out, as we're trying to assess the risks in the product timeline here, is, as you know, there's significant changes at the federal level on policies and processes and so forth. Everything from discussions that instead of the St. Paul Federal Office review and supporting might have to go all the way to DC, a whole level of different bureaucracy, that's going to be changing just the whole review process potentially. The entire environmental document is being completely, the policies are changing, we can no longer potentially be looking at things like greenhouse gases or communities of disadvantaged communities and so forth. Those are being written out of the document, and we got to figure that out and figure out what is the federal requirements for this document. So we're pretty much not stopped further, any further movement on this document until the feds can figure out what it is they want from us here. So some, yeah, a lot of risks and concerns that, just on those levels. And as you know, this is a very complex, very large project, and those introduce a lot of different variables, and as things move, it just takes a lot of effort to come up with how to respond to the impacts and what kind of mitigations we are going to do. We are looking at mitigations now. We have identified the alternative. Now we're going through significant evaluation of what all those mitigations are going to be, everything from noise walls to wetland impacts. We're studying archeology, we're doing all these things, and those are all being reviewed significantly right now. We are getting close, but with all these potential impacts, just with our process here, the delays are significant, and unfortunately, it's just not going to be wrapped up here the next month or two that we were hoping here. In addition, there are still some very significant risks that we are still trying to figure out what is going to happen to us. One, we have a railroad crossing on this project. And as you know, another project, I've been, me and, what, three different county attorneys now, have been working on trying to get the agreement with CPKC Railroad on the roundabout project. That's taken over five years of effort. We have started already, probably six months into working with CPKC right now, and we're hoping it's not going to take five years, but I think we are, I think now that we've learned a lot of what their needs are, CPKC went through quite a significant acquisition on a whole new, they acquired a whole different railroad, so that introduces a whole lot of changes on their aspects. So if you recall, six months ago, we brought up an agreement that we thought the railroad was happy with, and we signed it and sent it back to the railroad, and they decided to tear it up, and so we started back with the square one here. So anyway, significant risk on the railroad, hoping it's not going to take five years, but again, if we don't have the railroad agreement in place by construction, we have to have final plans to MINDOT by April 1st. There is no way we are going to be able to complete this document by December 1st, acquire all the railway, put together the final plans all by April 1st. Unfortunately, it's just the hard reality, this project is just taking too long of effort and too many of risk factors. Also, unfortunately, we've gotten increasingly noticed that there might be some litigation against the project, so that introduces other significant risks, and then we will just not be able to use that funding if this project does not proceed. So, and that's a hard fast deadline that we have on using federal money. If we don't have the environmental document done by December 1st, we lose the funding, it goes away. So we have no other alternative, given all these significant delays and significant potential risks still remaining. I am going to be bringing to the, our Southeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, ATP, as the agency or the committee that works with MINDOT and represents all the counties in the Southeast Minnesota area in combined transportation coordination. And I'm going to ask that entity to transfer that funds to another eligible project. In this case, we have a project that's ready to go. We have budgeted this year for final design, is our Main Street project. So we can get through the necessary environmental document for that project. It's already a federal project with some highway safety improvement funds that we have allotted for, and we, our consultant on that project is fully committed. We finalized a proposal, hopefully next, next board meeting here to, we talked about in committee this morning here, but we have a proposal then to get them started right away here, and they should have no problem meeting all the requirements for the. for the federal documents for this project, which is not as involved as the East Side Quarter, much simpler project, if you will. So the ATP meets March 11th, which I'll be bringing to the.
I might correct, it's April 11.
Excuse me. Thank you. I'm stuck in March here. So it's April 11th, so it's Friday, so I'll be bringing that to the ATP. And it's going to be on the ATP. If they don't allow us to transfer the money, they could potentially pull it back and issue it to another county. We don't have a choice in that matter. It's what the ATP does with that federal funding, because their interest is keeping that money in Southeast Minnesota. If we, as a Southeast ATP organization, feel that that money is not going to be able to be used in a timely manner, meeting these deadlines, then the state of Minnesota is going to be looking at taking it to a different district. So the ATP sits, the Southeast Minnesota, ATP is very interested in keeping that here and being able to use it with either, hopefully we can keep it here in the county, but ultimately ATP might move it to another more shovel-ready project potentially. So, yeah, I'm certainly going to ask the ATP that we keep that here in our county. What this means for the project, for the East Side Quarter project anyway, we have no idea at this time. We are working with MINDOT and the Federal Highway after ATP, once ATP decides that this request is good, then we'll continue working with our MINDOT and FHWA partners and what that means for the project. But other than what type of funding it is here, we are continuing to move the project forward as much as we can. The shift in funding, if it does go to the Main Street project, then all the state aid funds, the, or sales tax funds that we have currently allocated for the Main Street, we just ship that $4 million to the East Side Quarter project. So if we can keep that in the county, there is no budget change. So, and there are no tax levy funds involved with this. This is all sales tax or state aid taxes, which are paid for by more few, the taxes we pay at the gas pumps. So your property taxes do not change whether we have the funding or not. So, yeah, since we implemented the savings tax in 2014, there is no property levy to be used in real construction in this county. So, yeah, there's still a lot of unknowns yet until ATP makes a decision here. I don't know if they'll make a decision on Friday or not, we'll be presenting the request with them, but right now it's all, everything's on the table right now until we figure out where this is going, so.
Thank you both for those. Link, link, please. Explanation there. There's a lot to thank Paul there.
Yeah.
About the answer of some of the questions.
Mr. Chair, if I can add, Steel County has benefited from the local option sales tax for years and has been banking that money specifically for the East Side Quarter project, knowing full well that it was going to be an multimillion dollar project, regardless of whether we had the federal assistance for it or not. So Steel County has been very prudent in terms of how it has gathered and saved its resources. You know, we have obviously county state aid money that is used year over year, but it really is the local option sales tax that has been the primary funder for these large, big-ticket projects that we know are coming down the line. And a portion of that was earmarked for Main Street, and a significant, if not majority of that money was earmarked for the East Side Quarter. So ultimately, this is a project that's been planned for and has been anticipated. Obviously, the cost increases, the delays, you know, make those dollars go a little less farther, but we've also been anticipating some of those increases as well and continuing to monitor our savings. So as Paul mentioned, we are in great position as a county that we don't have to levy for our local improvement projects. A lot of the counties around us don't have that local option sales tax. We do, and we've been managing it very prudently to make sure that we have the funds in the bank for these types of big-ticket projects.
With that, if there's any further information questions, anybody wants to ask from Paul? Otherwise, I'd.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Paul, just real quickly, regarding the federal funding, does that change, this movement of the money, does it change the requirements of the road or of the East Side Quarter project?
Not sure what that means. State standards are significantly different than federal standards. We no longer have to follow, or we no longer have federal funds, or potentially we no longer have to follow federal requirements then. But, yeah, there are some environmental things that the feds still require some sort of review, so what that means for different impact analysis is uncertain at this time here, so.
Well, would there be, if we did the Main Street project, would there be federal funds available next year or the year after for the East Side Quarter?
Southeast Minnesota counties, 11 different counties that make up the ATP, we have established the criteria of how projects are selected for federal funds, and a big factor in helping the ATP decide who gets that federal funding, we typically give about four, four and a half million dollars allotted to the Southeast region for, from federal funds to these 11 counties. And a big factor is that something we call geographic appetite, basically says how much and what, and when was the last time you had federal money? So, yeah, for some reason, the ATP denies us this transfer and sucks the money back. We could potentially reapply another year to this fund, but this geographic appetite pretty much puts the 11 colonies on a more or less a rotation cycle, about every 10, 11 years, you get opportunity to this money, so.
So come the 11th, if they don't approve Main Street, it could be put back to the East Side Quarter, or?
That's an option we can look at, you know.
But the deadlines would remain, I mean, we still have to meet the December 1 deadline and the April 1 deadline, and those are all going to be possible right now.
Well, the current, well, the next, next slew of money that's available is, I want to say 2030 funds, that are, I think that's either 29 or 2030. So we have to reapply and go through the process. If we don't get this federal money right now, which is allocated to 2026, if we don't use it in 26, and we could potentially reapply, we'd be probably pretty high on the list of being the next county to be able to apply for this money. Otherwise, if we do get this money for, if we do have the option, or if ATP approves moving it to Main Street, then the, it'd probably be another 10, 11 years before we see this federal money again.
Mr. Chair, so just to wrap my hand around it, two projects, regardless of where the federal money goes, it's cost neutral. At the end of the.
Assuming we get the, if we can transfer it, if for some reason ATP decides to pull it back to a more shovel-ready project, we could potentially lose that, and then we'd be 4 million off.
Yeah, so 4 million, we're a risk to lose again. Even if we pass this, there's still no guarantee 100% that we get that 4 million. So this is, this is 4 million that we want Steel County to get, help us pay for our roads instead of having the taxpayer do it, so. With that, I would take.
What's your suggestion?
I was going to say, you don't pull up, you sound like you're doing a question.
Yeah. You know, without pulling up a whole time, how, it seems like these projects get delayed and delayed, and we're always, this one, for whatever reason, seems like it's been delayed a bunch. And how do, how do we get here? You know, it's, this is, we've been talking a lot for, Kevin, and now we're talking about not having the funds that were originally allocated to project to complete that project. Thankfully, there's an outlet to move that money to another project, so Steel County doesn't lose 4 million dollars, but without getting too in-depth, we've had a setback after setback. You know, are you staffing, or is it federal government, the state of Minnesota? I'm not on that committee anymore, so I don't.
On this project, multiple, multiple, multiple factors that have gone into it. And it is a complex project. We anticipated some changes, but yeah, the biggest piece being that environmental document level, that it got shifted from the programmatic to the non-programmatic categorical exclusion. That was a significant rework, restart, a year and a half delay right there. But as a complicated project as this is, things that we had originally made a lot of assumptions as we put together the plans and the product timelines, as we take a look at the impacts, and, yeah, for example, one big thing of is, as we're doing the noise analysis, is what is the speed of the road? And we got a lot of feedback from the public that they don't like 55 miles an hour design, so the project team has gone back and looking at what can we do to maybe address some of those concerns? And I think the project team has, so initially, we were looking at noise analysis based on the 55 mile an hour design, and 55 mile an hour traffic is a lot louder than slower traffic. So as we've gone back, kind of iterative process now, it's like, okay, we're going to find a design speed to go to a lower speed, and then along with that, we also got some more data on our track control as we're evaluating, should we use a two-way stop sign, a four-way stop sign, roundabouts, there are traffic signals. We've now been looking at, as we're building the mitigations, as we're building the final details of the preferred alternative of number three here that we've been looking at here, we are, the project team has decided four major intersections on the East Side Quarter are proposing to be roundabouts. And that affects that design speed of those roads, slows down traffic significantly, so with bringing in the roundabout now as a decision, and some of what we're going to be proposing in the final environmental feasibility studies here to you, is, yeah, the roundabouts slow down the traffic, it reduces the noise levels, and we got to kind of restart the whole noise analysis a little bit, based on some of the assumptions we started before, so. It's an iterative process. We have to go back as we study one impact, and then we mitigate or make changes to that, and then how does that impact the other, other things that we're all studying? So it's a back and forth process, and this is a very complex thing, and it's just, it's proven to be a lot of extra work and time and delays here, unfortunately, so. But we are listening to the public comments that we got in our public meetings, and putting that into the final proposals here. We're studying all different impacts, we're looking at wetland impacts, we're looking at floodwater impacts, and all these things. So it's, it's a lot of effort that's going into this, so.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, a little more. So as we're reading all, we heard tonight from a lot of people with comments as it relates to the East Side Quarter, and I think we all agree, we don't want to forfeit 4 million dollars. And I think the same people that are saying federally funded or forgiven, that seems to be the tagline, would also agree, you don't want to waste 4 million dollars. I think at the end of the day, if we decide, or this gets moved, this 4 million gets moved to Main Street, that doesn't mean the discussion stops, or that we're not going to have a discussion at some point of mitigation efforts. Obviously, that's the intent of this group or this board. You know, what do those mitigations look like? That remains to be seen, but that's the discussions that need to happen, and then they will happen. I think the problem is we get delayed so many times and get caught up in all of this back and forth, and we shouldn't have those back and forth. This is, this is a road that's going to benefit the entire public, not just that neighborhood. And we have to keep that in mind, and that's kind of what we're all struggling with here is, you know, how do we balance the wants and the needs of the people that live there and also the people that live in our county? The best move from north to south, and what that looks like at the end of the day, I don't know for sure yet, but we're going to have those discussions on what those mitigation efforts look like and what it's going to be. But to forfeit 4 million dollars doesn't make sense. That means at some point, we may have to levy the taxpayer for 4 million dollars for another project somewhere. I'm not willing to let that go, but it doesn't make sense. So. And, yeah. Any other comments? If not, well, thank you, Paul. Your transfer request is granted. About the resolution banning parking on the west side of County State Aid Highway number 46 on page 74, New York.
City and County Commissioners, Cassaw 46 is a north-south relative, runs down the west side of Blue and Prairie, and past the school. It's aligned by several athletic fields. And for many decades, I've leave, talking to people out there, the public has parked along Cassaw 46 for these athletic events. But recently, we received a request to ban parking along this route. The complaint is concerned that the traffic on 46, or the parking people on 46 is impeding traffic, impeding farm implements, and is a safety concern. The design of Cassaw 46, the construction of that 46 is, it's a, it's a county highway built to rural standards, which is basically two 12-foot lanes and a very minimal shoulders. So it's not designed for parking on either side of the road. Working with the school district, parking is available outside of 46. Yes, 46 is right next to the athletic fields, but there is parking not too far away. The school district has recently spent a lot of money building sidewalks, ADA compliant to their parking lots on the east side of the, of the school, and they recently just completed a gravel parking lot on the west side of 46, just across from the athletic fields. So there is parking, and then there's city streets off the county road system that are available for parking as well. County 46 is a low-volume road. It's only taking about 400 vehicles a day on average. That's probably not common in athletic days, but there's pretty low volume for our, our system here. And the parking has been occurring for many, many years. I've talked to many stakeholders, both for and against parking on this route, and so I guess it's really on your desires of what you want to do there. One option is a compromise here, so banning parking on the west side, and it gives us a little more freedom of movement of vehicles, but that's going to increase the speed of traffic through this. And it still allows parking on the east side, it gives some access to the public, park close to the athletic fields, but a lot of times, people parking on the road violate statutes that say you cannot encroach into the travel lanes. If you're in luck of the white line, you're in violation of the law and could be ticketed. That's, you know, given back to these shoulders, they're not there, it's not, probably going to always be working out well, but with no parking on the west side, it gives us a little more room for vehicles to get out, so. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, but last time, this year last time, I went down and met Tom Peterson, who just bought the place across from the ball lanes, who has asked for this, and he expressed some concerns. He drove me around the school for the east side. His concerns were manufacturing aren't to him, can't get trucks in, farmers getting through, worried about ambulance getting in his driveway, and public safety. So after talking to him and going on his road tour and coming back, I went and talked to the businessmen at the north, and I asked Kevin Christensen, who was in both seats, they go, Kevin, is this a problem with the trucks? He says, no, you know, they've been doing, they've been parking there for 50 years, and my truck's coming in the morning, not when the sporting events are there. I talked to O'Conners who own the land on that road, and asked them if this parking impedes their farming, and they said, no, you know, they've been parking there for 50 years, and, and we farm in the morning. And we farm in the morning, we get our equipment there in the morning. I talked to the ambulance driver and asked if it was going to be an issue getting into that place. As Tom was worried if he had a heart attack there, if ambulance would be able to get in. And the former ambulance driver said they have two driveways. They're going to get in there no matter what. And so the real question is public safety. Like I say, they've been doing this for 50 years. And this happened last spring. I know there's a lot of older people and younger people. They've got open weather, they want to watch their grandson play ball. And if you park on any of those streets, you can't sit in your car and watch. It's a low pedestrian or low-traffic road. So the people that can watch their grandson and why not play ball there, I think is important to me. I talked to Tom afterwards, and I told him I wasn't in favor of it, and he's proceeded further. I have along the Blue and Prairie Country Club, the golf there, and then the gun club. And I've talked to, also along, I asked people what they thought. There's nobody in favor of taking the parking out of there. I've got more phone calls, texts, emails on this field than ever on any other thing. And everybody says that there's one person that wants this, and that's all. I think if we took parking on one side, it's going to increase the speed, like you said, and make it not a safe. I would be my vote or my recommendation, after talking to people in Blooming and everything, if you don't change it because one person wants it, then I would say move the parking the same. I think if you leave the parking there, the low-traffic that goes through there, if you pull up, you see cars on the both sides, you slow down. You know what I mean? I'm not saying that nothing could happen, but it hasn't happened in 50 years. And I would hate to have people not get to the ball fields or watch the ball fields because somebody bought a house that was on the road.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Glenn. I'm going to say, Robert's rule really states you should make a motion a second before you get to discussion, but I think in this instance, we're going to... If anybody else wants to add anything before we get going here? Okay. Mr. Chair. Mr. Glenn, I respect the comments. However, I've had comments the other way. I think, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe this road is designed with parking on the shoulders.
It's County State standards for parking. It was never not for parking.
And it's going to go unnamed, but I think an individual down there that's local city who's indicated that they would prefer that the county take the lead on this, it's our role, right? We get to make that decision. I don't think it goes far enough. I don't think you should park on either side of that road. There's ample, and you laid it out here well. There's ADA sidewalks to get to the ball fields. There's ample parking in the parking lot. There's parking on the city streets. There's lots of schools you go to that you're not going to be able to park on the street and watch little Johnny play baseball. I just don't think that, I don't think it should be parked. If we're going to go and take a position, I don't think the position should be to have it on either side. It shouldn't be on one side. It should be, we don't want it on either side. My fear is a little kid dart, and I get it, nothing's happened in 50 years, but some little kid darts out between some cars, and there are cars driving down, aren't here, that's going 30 or have a faster speed, as you indicated, may happen if they take the parking lot. They're going to look to us, and we, you know, it's our role. What'd you do to stop that? Did you put signs up? Have you allowed it? That's my fear at this point. You know, now it's on our agenda. Yep, and we should talk about, it hasn't happened, but the sherif can happen. And I know you can't mitigate all potential accidents. I understand. But this road is not designed with parking on either side. If we're going to take a position, I don't think we should allow it. They can roll, you know, ADA, they have sidewalks to, the city address that, or the school address. And again, there's parking in the parking lot. The city streets or side streets have plenty of parking for vehicles, for people who want to get to the game. I think if anything, we say no parking at all on that road. And I know that's contrary to John, where you're at now, but I've had comments the other way, where people are, now that it hit the agenda, saying you need to address this. It's all right. Thanks for your input, Mr. Remy. Do you have anything, Mr. Krieger?
No, our early thought process in Public Works was this was a compromise. At the west side, because that way you wouldn't have kids darting into traffic because the cars would all be on the east side. We just thought that it may be a compromise to still allow some of the grandparents to be able to watch without having to walk and do that. Make it a safer atmosphere for kids because they wouldn't be darting across the road.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to add, too, that me and Mr. Krieger, we were on the Transportation Committee, and Mr. Pierce came up and sat down and had a talk with us. That war meeting, Paul was there, there was staff was there. And we had quite a lengthy discussion, just this and everything he had to say, and he brought up his concerns. At that time, I told him, I said, well, you know, I really don't know. Nobody from Blue and Prairie. I live a mile, Mosica County, and a mile and a half from Rice County. I don't know nobody down there. I said, but I tell you what, if you go back and you get the school board to back you up, that's our kids down there. I'd back them up 100% whatever the school board says. So then, fast forward to now, fast forward to now, you know, never heard nothing till I went to rest, I seen it in my package. I seen this in my package. So then I did a little column around and talking. I talked to the superintendent of the school. I talked to the chair of the school board. I talked to the mayor of Blue and Prairie. And there's people definitely on both sides, both sides of the issue. And truth of matter is, if we pass it where you only can park on one side of the road, or you can't park on one side of the road, that's what the rule is, the sign to go up. But legally, you can still park on the other side of the road, even though the shoulder ain't as it should be. You can legally park there long as you're off the road right away. Because if somebody's over that, then it's up to sheriff to tag. So I agree, too. I think it's a compromise. So that's what I would support.
So the little signs that are on the north and the south end, those have no speed limit, right? Or does it have the, you know, the slow-moving signs on each end? Is that just for traffic?
What signs are you referring to?
Well, there's a sign on each end for traffic. Is that just for the school zone or... Because remember, we talked about...
There's a 45-minute hour closed speed limits. And then there's pedestrian crossing signs out there. I don't remember what else is out there.
I thought there's slow-moving signs on the farther down on both ends.
I would think that the road is far enough away from the school buildings that it wouldn't think they had the school zone.
We got pedestrian crossing out there, but I don't have that idea on that.
So, I mean, we've all had the, we've been hearing this. We've been hearing this, been reading it in the paper. So with that, I would go for Lord's wishes. I'd like to get this on the vote. Lord's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I don't think you're going to get a motion tonight. There's too many conflicting ideas out there.
Does it make sense to table this matter or does this matter fail to elect a motion?
I'll make a motion, but no, we don't put any signs up.
I've got a motion, not put any signs up. We'll hear a second. Isn't it, we're looking for a resolution here.
Well, I'll offer a resolution. I'll put signs up.
So we amend the resolution. It's not what it's stated here.
Right now, the, he's the chair of the resolution right now. Takes no parking on the west side. If the board desires, we can modify the resolution to whatever the board's wishes are.
We've got a motion, we want a second. Do you have a second? Do a second. If you want a second, it's going to die if you don't have a second. Mr. Chair, I can't second nothing?
Oh, you can second.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I won't second that. Just wondering. Is there any other one?
If you have a second, it would die.
Okay, so that dies for life of a second. Are there any other motions on this matter? Any motions? If not, we'll have to, if it just dies as is, we'll have to wait for maybe some further investigation? Do we come to consensus on this?
Can you write a letter or four?
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, if nothing happens, we don't put signs, it remains as is.
That's all right. That'll give people a little more time to reach out to commissioners and voice your opinions, and maybe they will have a consensus next time. With that, we will move on.
Mr. Chair, is it then your wish to table this matter to your next regular meeting to that of hope it was given an opportunity? Otherwise, there's no action taken. I don't know that I have direction to bring it back because we're on with this, so.
I'll give you, I'll give you direction to bring it back because I think, we got to bring it back one more time for sure, just to let it, see what happens here.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, I will make a motion to table this until our next regular meeting.
Do you have a second on that? Second? I'll second it. There you go.
Can I make a comment first? Can I make a comment first?
Mr. Chair, no, for a second, you can make a comment, yes. Now you can go with that.
I was just going to say, maybe we should be tableing this until after our next meeting.
We got a motion. Motion for a second.
Table it for the next meeting. Is that the issue?
Yeah, the motion second, table it next meeting. And we call it quits. All those in favor, see them as I say, aye. Aye. All those standing by? Mr. Chair, we'll bring it back next time. Okay, we have. Rule number 19, number 20, Internal Central Services Committee Minutes, was April 1st, that's on page 15 of the packet, the property maintenance committee minutes. April 3rd is page 111 in the packet. No presentations. We'll take this to Commissioner's Board. Tommy Attorney, you have any thoughts?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Krieger, go ahead.
On March 26th, at South Country Health Alliance Finance Committee meeting. On March 27th, I had South Country Health Alliance Strength Powers Board meeting and compliance training. On April 4th, I had a meeting with Representative Sexton, talking about the Medford project. Projects, I guess. April 8th, today, we had Public Works. And I just want to give a shout out to remind people of the Enviro Show that's coming May 10th at the Four Seasons Center. If anybody has any booth spaces filling up, so if anybody has a company or a project out there that's listening, that'd be a great way to showcase some of your products for this particular event.
Mr. Remy. Since my last report, March 13th, I had Land Use and Records Committee meeting. On the 14th, Min Prairie Personnel Committee meeting. And the 18th, Min Prairie Joint Powers Board meeting. On the 24th, County's Providing Technology Zoom meeting. Also, on the 24th, was the Annual County and Township Meeting. On the 27th, South Country Health Alliance Compliance Training. April 2nd, Rice and Steel 911 Joint Powers Board meeting. And on the 3rd, Property Maintenance Committee meeting.
Administrator. Two things. One, with regard to the Rice Steel Joint 911, we were able to tour the facilities that are slated to be rehabbed for the new dispatch center. And while it took a lot of imagination, you know, they just opened up their computer with this, you know, beautifully rendered, you know, drawing of what it's going to look like. It does appear to be a far better setup than what they've got right now. So once those walls come down and construction gets started, we'll see some pretty significant changes. And then I also wanted to let the board know, as you recall, at your retreat last November, you had asked that we develop a code of conduct for our citizen committees. You eventually then approved that code of conduct in oath of office. I gave my first presentation to the Extension Committee. I do believe it went well. I maybe would defer to the board members that were present. But they took to heart what was said. There was even a question about whether somebody could donate a pizza to their meeting or not. So they at least heard the piece about potential financial interest. I still need to go to the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Commission. That'll likely be at their main meetings.
Commissioner Brockler. Hi, I had the Public Works Committee this morning, and how is it?
I attended the Internal Central Services Committee meeting and the Extension Committee meeting. Some highlights of the Extension Committee is they talked about local programming and planning, passing upcoming events, and promoting their information resources provided by the Extension.
And I had, on the 26th, on the 26th of March, I had Extension Committee. And like Attorney Frye said, we, two local committees, we're all doing the code of ethics. Our committees are going to have the same ethics that us as commissioners go by. And just for uniformity. After that, I had, the 28th, I was supposed to meet with Representatives Sexton and Medford, but I had a couple of previous phone calls the day before, so I did have to meet in person on that. Internal Central Services was 8 o'clock on the first. I had 911 on the second. On the 3rd, we had Property Maintenance. On the 7th, I had Planning and Zoning. And then took us to our work session today. And that's all for me. And our next meeting notices is... Is that right? Yeah, we just got Land Use and Records Thursday, April 10th, 8:00.
That's canceled.
That was canceled.
That was canceled. The other one was the 8th, that was the day, that was the morning. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Boy, here we go. There's the rest of the time. Excuse me. My secretary moved up there. Public Safety Health, Tuesday, April 15th, at 8:00 a.m. in the world. Strategic Budget Session, Wednesday, April 16th, 4:00 p.m. at the County Control. And the coming board, next coming board work session is Tuesday, April 22nd. And the next coming board meeting is Tuesday, April 27th at 5:00 p.m. in the world. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn. So move. Please, please, adjourn. All the papers, sing, and say aye. Bye-bye.